All of these people are going to be voting for you, and they know you were late. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sina Najad, and I welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Combined Meeting with the City Council today. If you would please call the roll.
Chairman Najad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty? Is absent. Commissioner Jabar?
Present.
Commissioner Jabia? Is absent. Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Macon? Is absent. Commissioner Noyala?
Here.
Commissioner Senegar?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Harris? Is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell?
Present.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, ma'am. And we, you have received the minutes of the last meeting of May twel- May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, with the entertaining motion to approve and/or if you have any changes or comments. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have a thank you. We do not have any items on our regular meeting, and I will turn the floor to the Honorable Mayor to get us started with a joint meeting with the City Council.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Mayor West? Mayor Potem Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw? Is absent. Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Neeld? Is absent. Councilmember Samuel? Is absent. Thank you.
All right, this is a joint meeting before the both City Council and the Planning Commission. This will be your only opportunity to speak on this item. It will be today. The Planning Commission will make a recognition to the City Council. The items will be heard today from the next available agenda for our decision. There will be no public hearing on the item at the City Council meeting. So again, today is the only public hearing on these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I apologize for some of you that have to wait a little bit, but I promise you this would be the shortest planning and zoning meeting that you have attended. So with that, let's get started with PZ two zero two four dash one oh nine.
Good afternoon. Brett Floyd is requesting a rezone with a specific use permit to allow an automotive repair, paint, and body shop to be located at thirty-four eighty Benchmark Drive. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Benchmark and flows through to French Road. The lots to be rezoned from RMM Residential Multifamily Medium Density to GCMD General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling are along the southern boundary of the development and will mostly be used for parking and landscaping buffer requirements. Rezoning this property to GCMD or a more restrictive zoning district would be consistent with the adjoining zoning districts and will require a landscaped buffer to surrounding residential properties. Caliber Collisions has facilities nationwide. Hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m., and this business will be an automotive repair shop with operations such as glass and auto body repairs, painting, et cetera. Staff is recommending approval of the request with the following conditions: One, all lighting installed must be directional and shielded from all residential properties to the east and south. Two, construction plans must meet all requirements of water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or fog pretreatment programs. No permanent structure or apparatuses shall be placed within easements. Construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. Construction plans shall be in compliance with Section twenty-eight oh four oh oh six landscaping and screening requirements. And please note that final occupancy is subject to review and acceptance of submitted plans and field inspections to verify compliance with all conditions and applicable codes. Staff mailed out seventeen property owner notices. We received one response in favor of the request and five responses in opposition of the request. Those five responses will trigger the twenty percent rule mandating that council provide a three-fourths favorable vote for the final approval of this request. Those property owner notices read as follow, I'm sorry, as follows. The first, no, states with comments, "The GCMD is intended to serve as a buffer or transition between commercial and medium-density residential..." Medium-density residential. French Road is actually not even medium-density. It is in actuality low-density residential. GCMD has no height restrictions, and there could end up being a tall structure next to a residence. A body shop is not comparable to a strip center. There will be fumes, emissions, dust, noise, damaged vehicles, and contaminants in close proximity to residences. Our adjoining property is for sale, and a body shop on this site would negatively impact the value of our property and that of French Road residences, and it would limit the number of potential buyers or lease tenants for our property and for theirs. The second comment was just no, there was no comment. Third says no, not in favor of a body shop next door to a residence. Fourth comment, not in favor of a body shop being across the street. Fifth comment, not in favor of a body shop next door to my home. They did attach a statement. It's about three pages long. I will just give a short, the first and foremost is about environmental quality for the, them and their family, and doing research of what body shops can put out into the environment. And the second would be the worry about pollutants in air from them as well. For the field where the school is to the northeast of this location, they're worried about air contaminants for that area. And then the one that was in favor had no comment, just said yes. On your screens, you'll see the subject property outlined in red. Here is the portion to be rezoned. This is a proposed site plan. You can see a large portion of that rezoned area is simply for parking, and then again, there will be a landscaping requirement both on the south and east side there. We did not include the landscape drawing in the PowerPoint as it was very bulky. It was hard to read. Provided by the applicant are these renderings of what the proposed product will look like at the end. This is the view from Benchmark Drive. And again, the view from Benchmark Drive with their landscaping installed. This is the current subject property, looking at it from Benchmark through to French Road. This is the subject property from French Road, looking through to Benchmark. North from Benchmark. East on Benchmark. And west. And then we do have represents of both Caliber and the property owner here.
Great. Any questions for the staff? All right, and the applicant? Good afternoon, ma'am. If you would state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners and Councilmembers, and all here present. First of all, thank you for all your time. My name is Melissa Hernandez from Cross Architects. Address is two zero one nine Knights Court, Allen, Texas. And thank you so much, Elena, for the comprehensive project introduction. I would like to know, to emphasize that it is the intent of the owner and all consultants to construct a quality project within the standards set by the City of Beaumont for building and engineering design, and we will comply to meet all the conditions of approval stated in the staff report. As mentioned, the facility will operate from seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m., Mondays to Fridays. Will have approximately eighteen to twenty staff, or employees. And as you may already know, Caliber Collision is a well-known brand and is one of the biggest collision centers in the nation with over one thousand seven hundred locations in forty-one states and still continues, continuously growing. They are not the average typical auto body shop that you see. As a multi-state, multi-operator of body shops, Caliber Collision is well-versed in the procedures and requirements to divert any operational hazards, and they work with most of major insurance companies. All vehicles received for repair will remain behind an eight-foot, eight-foot-tall wood fence with additional landscape buffers for screening. All parts, materials, and equipment shall be stored within an enclosed building, so you really will not see any of this in the outdoor storage. No vehicle awaiting repair shall be located in any portion of the site so as to be visible from any public street. I am aware that members of the community may have concerns about fumes and noise, so I would like to emphasize again that all repair activities will be conducted indoors and completely screened from public view. The type of facility proposed shall be limited to vehicle body prep, parts replacement, and finishing workroom. Typical repairs include hood replacement, fender repair, hail damage, light interior, molding and windshield replacement. Inherently, these types of repairs are not loud enough to project recognizable sound beyond the proposed property lines. Furthermore, this facility shall operate with all exterior doors closed with insulated interior. The shop contains a full HVAC system that shall provide climate control year-round. With all doors closed, there should really be no nuisance to neighboring properties in the way of noise. In fact, we have some noise studies that confirm noise levels from the facility during peak hours is equivalent to average conversation or in a restaurant setting like sixty-five decibel. In addition, proper landscaping will be incorporated for enhanced screening. As previously mentioned, all services, including painting, will be done inside the building with closed doors. Paint booths are self-contained and complies with all codes in regarding to spray booths and mix rooms. The paint mixing room exhaust fan will be installed to run continuously and remain in operation at all times. They use exhaust filter materials for particle emissions with an exceptional removal efficiency rating of ninety-nine point nine percent. In addition to protecting the environment, a clean exhaust airstream shields the paint booth's exhaust chamber, ductwork, and fan from overspray accumulation. Furthermore, auto body repair is one of the least traffic generating businesses, so this should not negatively affect the traffic circulation within the area. Actually, it's less generating than retail commercial businesses. Caliber likes to be located close to their customers, and we believe that this location will not only promote further success to existing businesses and provide job growth, but this will also provide additional convenience services to the neighborhood. We are very excited to work with the City of Beaumont and take part in the city's vision in terms of growth. We are requesting for the commission's and members of council support of the rezoning and conditional use to allow Caliber Collision to operate body paint and repair shop at this occasion. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
On this location, approximately eighteen to twenty.
Any other questions?
What size building this is gonna be?
Approximately sixteen thousand three hundred fifty square foot.
Okay.
What is the height, what is the height of the building gonna be?
Thirty-two feet, thirty to thirty-five, something like that.
It's a one-story operation, right?
Yes, sir.
Are there plans for expansion into that additional piece of property to the, I believe that's the south?
Yes, sir. And like I said, there is actually another rendering of this where it is, it has their landscaping completely included. There is a thirty-foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, I wanna, what I'm getting at is the, the, the wa- the part where the dumpster is, apparently that is marked for vehicle storage. Is there a chance that Caliber would come back and put another building over there at any time?
No, sir.
Are you at a position to, to accept that as a condition?
Yes, sir.
And what, you, you did touch about the fumes and the dust, and I'm sure you guys very familiar with all the EPA requirements because painting, you know, fiberglass has a lot of regulations that are attached to it, right?
Yes, sir, of course. Yeah, we've done, we've done a lot of Caliber collisions all over in the nations, and that's, yeah.
Sure. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions for me? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we open the floor for the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am. Would love to hear from you. If you would state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Holly Gilbo. I live at thirty-two eighty French Road, but I also own three other properties on that street. Normally, I would not even come in. I would not object to a business being built or opened. The fact that it has chemicals involved caused me to do a little bit of homework, and if I may, I'd like to read my statement.
Please do. You have three minutes, and please take your time.
Okay. Dear members of City Council and Zoning Division, I am writing to express my concerns regarding this proposed construction of a new body shop located near my residence at thirty-two eighty French Road, Beaumont. As a resident of this community, I'm deeply concerned about the impacts, potential impacts this development could have on our neighborhood, environment, safety, and overall quality of life. First and foremost, it's all about the environment and quality of life for me and my family. After doing some homework and some research, on a body shop being so close to my home, I see that it can cause respiratory issues and trigger flare-ups in individuals with asthma, which my son does have. I am not willing to take that chance with a body shop right across the street or in my backyard. Also, with gardening, you can potentially be taking a chance with contamination. Growing vegetables that you will eat, being in the ground with chemicals so close. Second, there's a school right beside where the body shop would be constructed, and I worry about the pollutants in the air for them as well. The field where they practice football, which my son's practiced there, and run track would be right next door. I worry about them, the breathing quality and the pollutant in the air while practicing during the day. Third, I have three rental properties, which are all within the same distance, if not closer than my residence, that are all along French Road. I have spoken to my tenants, and they are concerned about the chemicals with their health and their pets. If they are to move because of the body shop being built, I am concerned about rentability in the future. So I have renting issues that my property also with resale value. The increased traffic brought by a commercial operation such as a body shop would pose significant safety risk to residents, potentially children and elderly individuals in the area. I have had a chance to look over the packet, and on the, the potentially body shop where this would cause chaos to our street on French Road, there are, the nature of the business also raises concern about noise level, which can disrupt the peaceful character of our neighborhood.
Excuse me, ma'am. Your, your time allotted is, is over, but I would make a motion to allow the lady to continue with her statement?
Second.
The motion and second, all approve?
Yes.
Please continue.
Thank you. As you can see, I am above, I am concerned about the environmental implications, including potential air quality, degradation from the paint, fumes, the chemical runoff, which could affect both human health and beloved pets. These issues could not only direct, or detract from the quality of life, but could impact property values within the community. I urge the City Council and Zoning Planning Commission to fully consider the long-term impacts of this proposed development on our community. We value our quiet, safe, clean environment, and it is crucial that any new developments align with the interest of the well-being with the existing residents. I request that this matter be strongly considered with the residents in mind. I believe that together we can find a solution that meets the needs of the business community without compromising the integrity, safety, and air quality of our neighborhood. Thank you for the attention on this matter. I look forward to the response and see that the positive action be taken in respect to this concern. Thank you. Also, looking over the plans, it looks like the dumpsters would be right, the way the property is, will be right on the back of the property, which is right against our street on French Road. And if they're dumping anything, and it could be an accident, it could, anything, anything that could potentially happen would be draining right there in our ditches and end up right there in our yards, and that's a big concern for me. And especially, above all, my son who has asthma, that is a big concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir. If you please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
My name's Robert Dunham. My address is forty-one, office address is forty-one eighty Delaware, Suite three oh one, Beaumont, seven 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 oh six. Members of the commission and members of the council, I represent Southeast Texas Classic Real Estate, which is the owner of a large or ten acre, approximately ten acre tract of land to the north and northeast of this piece of land. It's located adjacent to the school that Ms. Gilbo mentioned. Classic, Southeast Texas Classic Real Estate objects to the proposed change, and my point in being here is to raise several legal issues that I think the commission needs to consider under the terms of the ordinance and the appropriate zoning definitions. It's my understanding they propose to change this RMM tract to a GCMD tract, but I don't believe that this tract satisfies the definitions or the intentions of the definition of a GCMD tract. The GCMD tract is defined as intended to reduce the negative effects associated with typical strip commercial development. So it, this tract is supposed to be, if it's supposed to be GCMD, it's supposed to reduce the effects of commercial strip development along the freeway, adverse effects on the adjoining residential neighborhoods. But in this case, rezoning this to GCMD is going to increase the burden or put in place a more industrial, more commercial tract or use than is there currently, and doesn't satisfy the intention of GCMD tracts. It's, GCMD is also defined as serving as a buffer or transition between commercial and medium-density housing or medium-density residential development. As Ms. Gilbo testified or stated, the stretch of the road along French is all single-family residences. There's not a multifamily or a medium-density development there. It's all single-family. It's rezoning this particular tract to GCMD is not, is also not consistent with the zoning that appears on the commission's map there. Immediately across the street from the proposed zoning is a single-family residence in an area zoned RCR. And if this tract, which is currently RMM, were to be changed to anything, it should be changed to RCR, not GCMD, because RCR would be consistent with the single-family revitalization zoning that's established for the piece of property immediately across the street. So I don't think that this is appropriate to be changed to a GCMD tract. I've also, one kind of technical question I have is that the application indicates that a Michael Flank or a Michael Plank is the owner, and I can't find any record of either a Michael Plank or a Michael Flank owning a piece of property in Jefferson County. I don't know that that makes a difference, but it, it made a difference for my investigation, trying to figure out who we were really dealing with, and it's not a Michael Flank or a Michael Plank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Where, where did you get the name Michael from?
It's on page four of the packet. It says Michael Flank, and on page six, it says Michael Flank.
Yeah, it says property owner, the applicant is Brent Florrie. Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir. If you would please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Joshua LeBlanc. Business address is thirty-four forty East Tex Freeway here in Beaumont, the adjoining property. Commission, members of the council, and the staff, thank you for your time this afternoon. I would like to speak in favor of the project. This is a property that has clearly never been developed in history. I believe the development of the property would be consistent with the City of Beaumont's goals long-term. Concerning traffic, as the renderings show, I don't believe there will be any entryway to the property as it's laid out. On French Road, it looks like all the entrance and access will be from the Benchmark Drive cul-de-sac. As far as concerns about particulates or air quality, I'm not positive, but it's my understanding that there is another body shop directly across the freeway, maybe within a thousand feet of this facility, that's already present. I think the staff's recommendations to the commission, as far as the landscape easements and setback, I think are appropriate. And it's been a long time since we have had another professional business that looks as nice as the Caliber Properties present renderings and an opportunity. It looks like a very nice professional building, and I think they would be a good neighbor to have. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. The lady that's representing the, the owners, you have heard a couple of, folks that are, that have spoken against your project, and some of the, the more important concerns are the air quality, dust and fume, and stuff that gets thrown in the dumpster, and you have a chance to rebut and, and comment on those for us, please.
Yeah, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Yeah. So I understand the concerns of the community, but we have, we have had locations that were adjacent to the residential properties, and we have never had any problems with those. As mentioned, we have all the studies that could help us to approve the air, that it's not gonna affect the air quality. And I'm actually, the waste handling of this auto body shop is actually much better than the shops that do oil changes. I think we do have one location that's just south of that property. Although, although washing, the detailing, the paintings are done inside the building, and we do have an oil interceptor, interceptor to cater those type of waste. And in addition to that, Caliber has a spill kit that meets OSHA and EPA requirements for the cleanup of hazardous materials. They also have a company that's called EnviroSafe that helps them to stay EPA compliant, so all of that as far as spills and all that kind of things will, will be contained inside the building for most part. And if you can see the RMM, the one that we're requesting for rezoning, we are just using that actually for just the parking storage and not for the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, folks, we heard from the staff, the applicant. We also heard from the neighbors and some of their concern. We did hear that the, the owners are in a position to agree that there won't be any building additions to the part that is gonna be rezoned, and that would remain as, as parking or storage. And they also have a commitment on the trash dumpster. You do not dispose of paint into those dumpsters. I know that's not legal. Okay. With, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Please do.
Regarding the page of the Beaumont Planning and Community Development and the property owner. There were some questions about a Mr. Michael Plank.
Mr. Noyala, that was the name that was submitted on the actual app, original application for the request by Mr. Floyd. He, he provided the name Michael Plank for the actual application. It looks like after the table of the last meeting and the signature sheet that was provided, it's under the name of Sherri K. Delmage is the property owner name that was signed and submitted with their signature sheet. But that name came from the, the application and the applicant themselves.
Counsel, do you see any issue with this?
So I believe that there's been some transfers since the last meeting, as long as the
As long as the application that is on file is true and accurate, then that's fine. Obviously, the first time it came before commission, it was somebody else did the application, and then the property could have changed hands or a new person with the individual. Typically, when they do applications, it's done by the engineering firm. That person's no longer with the firm. Somebody else can pick up the application who works in the office. So it's typically not as big of a problem as you think.
Okay, well, they're actually asking about the, the owner's name, so.
So as long as the owners, the owner, whoever's the owner at the time of the application that was filed, it could have changed when the new application was submitted. So I'm assuming, I mean, to say that the time that it was submitted, it was one owner, and then it was revised to a second owner?
Well, at the time it was submitted, it was submitted as that plank through the actual City Works application, and I don't know if it changed hands from that point onwards. I do know we changed with who we spoke with regarding the application.
So we'll just need to verify who the owner is before permits or.
Okay, well, I know we closed the public hearing, but the gentleman in the back is dying to tell us who the owner is. Go ahead. Yeah, please.
Hello, Joshua LeBlanc again. The owner of the property is East Tex Plaza Inc. I serve as an officer of the Board of East Tex Plaza Inc. Sherri K. Delmage, who signed the application, is the president of East Tex Plaza Inc. I believe the original application that was submitted was submitted by somebody affiliated with the developer. In the process of reviewing the contract, we pointed out that it needed to be the property owner who signed it, and the application that was submitted for, with Sherri Delmage's signature corrects that issue. It is East Tex Plaza who is.
Thank you. So the city does have the correct name, and this document needs to be revamped. Okay, any other questions from the folks?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at, and I guess this would be for you. What is the distance from the end of the parking to that property line? What's that buffer?
The dimensions are there. If we can zoom in, it, we can read it.
Yeah, I can't read it.
It looks like twenty-four, twenty-four and something, so it probably is eighty feet, but, but anyway, you, you tell us.
Yes, I think you're right. I can, I can barely.
It's a significant amount. I'm sorry, I was trying to look at the landscaping one, which is even further, but there's, I believe, a thirty-foot landscaping buffer in between the property line and that parking lot as well.
And that parking lot.
So at least thirty feet.
And at the end of the parking lot is where the eight foot.
Another eighty feet.
Another eighty feet, yeah.
Okay, and then I guess the next, and Ms. Gilbo, you live right across from this? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions, folks?
I'm sorry, you have to be recognized by the commission. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Holly Gilbo. She said something about eight-foot or a six-foot wooden fence, but in the paperwork, it says a gate, metal fence with the slats, with the plastic slats?
No, it was, I, I heard the wooden fence, but we make that as a condition. That would be wooden fence, and there is no, there is no access to French Road from what I understand.
And then also, it also says one of the potential hazards, the dust that would be, that equal to chalkboard dust. But that being in the air, like I said, my son has asthma, and I'm, that has me very concerned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so confirm that for me, lady, that it is gonna be a wooden fence. What did you say about the chalkboard dust? I didn't hear that, but.
I mean, the, the dust that's being produced is just akin to a chalk dust, chalk dust, the, the chalk dust, I'm sorry.
I know, but that's not on the outside.
Not on the outside.
Before it goes through the filter.
Correct.
Okay, I, I'm, because you're not gonna put.
No.
I, I didn't know that was, I knew that's not legal, but anyway.
No, it goes through a filter, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other confusion anybody wants to add? Nope, all right. I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any in opposition?
No.
One.
I'm sorry, I have a question. You had mentioned an additional condition of the.
Oh, forgive us.
Can I get that clarified, please?
Yes, 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 yes. Let me, let me read through that. The additional concern was, the additional condition was an commitment from the owner not to put any permanent structure on this rezoned parcel of land other than the storage, and the fencing would be an eight-foot wooden fence. And that's all I made a note of, and there's no access from French Road. Is that still your motion, sir?
Yes.
And the second?
Yes.
Still, and we have all ayes and, and no. Okay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. I would urge you, please, to visit with the neighbors and make sure that you can rectify any problems that they have. They do live here. They've been here, living here for a long, long time, and with all the rights, they are concerned. Thank you. We're gonna move to PZ two zero two four dash one one nine.
Cornell Price of Price Homes is requesting approval of a specific use permit to the, to allow construction of a duplex at two twenty-one North Parkway Drive. The intent of the duplex is to provide more housing options to an area and to promote infill lot development. According to our city's comprehensive plan, the property is located within the stable area. Such areas are built-up areas which are generally characterized by good-to-excellent structural conditions in neighborhoods that are free from blighting influences such as incompatible land uses, dilapidated and delect buildings, deteriorated or poor public infrastructure. vacant parcels which may exist are good-to-excellent development sites. This require, request appears to align with our city's comprehensive plan of Beaumont. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. One, that the construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including the requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements, and please note that final occupancy is subject to review and acceptance of submitted plans by field inspection to verify compliance with all applicable codes. We mailed out twenty-five property owner notices, and we received zero in favor and zero in response, uh, zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screens is the subject property. It is a double-frontage lot with fronts on Florida and Parkway. Mr. Price intends to only utilize the Parkway lot, having the duplex face Parkway with the rear yard being along Florida. This is the subject property. To the north, across Florida. To the south, across Parkway. East and west.
Thank you. Any questions for the lady?
How many responses did you receive?
Is the applicant in the audience?
Might have stepped out, but he was here.
All right.
Do you wanna go find him?
Can step out and check real quick?
It would be fair if you don't mind. Maybe he went to use the restroom or something. Don't go anywhere.
Councilor Turner's gonna look for him in the men's restroom.
He just came from men's restroom half an hour ago.
Without the applicant here, I don't know if the commission wants to move forward or table the item, given the fact that they won't be able to speak on it. If y'all, so if y'all have general questions on it.
So you didn't see him, right?
I say he was here.
All right. Can we table that and then just wait without having to cost him additional fees to come back?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion to, to table this case until we find the applicant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, are you taking a brief recess for us to look for him in the building, or are we tabling that into the next meeting?
He'll come back next time that he visits with the staff.
So clarify the motion that we're tabling this to the next meeting.
We would table this to the next time he comes and contacts the staff to schedule for the next meeting. Is the second of the same? And all the ayes?
Aye.
And anybody objected to that? No. All right. And the council's happy? Counselor?
Yes.
Oh, good. Look like a Greek wedding. You wait for the bride to say yes. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Mayor, if you would, be kind enough to let us go home.